I think we're ready to begin. Do we want to go back to the minutes?
Yes, we can do it under my report.
Okay, alrighty. We're going to go ahead and begin with audience participation. Shannon, do we have any?
Yes. Michael Turle?
Okay, before we begin. What do you have?
What?
The procedure for public.
What do you want me to do?
Well, before we begin, I'd like for Mr. Scafidi to read our procedures for public participation, and for those planning to speak out of respect, to please adhere to these procedures.
Okay, audience participation, no more than three persons to speak on one specific issue. If other issues are listed on the sign-in sheet, persons will speak on issues that they state on the sheet, on the sign-in sheet. Persons granted the floor shall address their remarks to the president of council and not engage council members or other officers of the city to debate. Ty raids are not permitted, nor shall any person utter any profane, derogatory, contemptuous, slanderous, harassing, mean-spirited, malicious, or false comments or remarks. The presiding office shall limit to five minutes, the time permitted, any speaker to address council. No person shall address council more than once at the same meeting. Members of council may respond during its audience participation only by leave of the president.
Okay. Mr. Turle?
Michael A. Turle, 9930 Forest Lake Drive. That's what I've got on Corbett's Farm. What have you got? That's how I was greeted when I came in to present an idea about saving Corbett's Farm two years ago. It was not taken very well. To me, it appeared as an attempt at intimidation, but I don't necessarily intimidate very well. I wrestled a four-time state champ, and my coach looked me dead in the eye, shook my hand, and shook my hand, and slapped me in the face and said, "Go out there and get them." So I kind of had an idea what I was getting into when I started here with Twinsburg Old School. About one year ago, this very week, I came in to start the effort to present ideas to save Twinsburg Old School. It was never really met with any real interest. We offered options to demolition. We showed examples for end-use. We gave ideas for contractors. Nothing was ever even considered. It was only stuck to one plan of the $4 to $8 million offered by Provanye and Associates, which was, as Mr. Provanye stated himself, "Those are bad numbers. Those are only good for a perambulator museum." We still stuck with those numbers. Our city planner presented five options for the old school. And stating with the rules here, as presented by Mr. Scafidi, I'm sticking strictly to facts here. These are all facts, as you guys have all heard over the last 12 months here. There were five ideas presented for Twinsburg Old School, all of which were self-admittedly in the same report given as bad ideas. That's not going to work. The perambulator museum won't work. The business incubator won't work. If I came in and I gave my boss five bad ideas on how to do something, I would be looking for a new boss. He would be looking for a new electrician. In July of 2013, I requested public information. It was quite a big, extensive packet of public information, I realize, and it took a little while for all of it to come in, but it did come in. I did not receive, for quite some time, the rent receipts from Kent State University. I came in at one council meeting and made a comment about withholding of information, which was taken at great distress to our law director. The very next week, I did get the rent receipts from Kent State University. I still, eight months later, have not gotten the receipts for reimbursements for the utilities from Kent State University, which total over $700,000. But it's pretty much a moot point at this point anyhow. In August of last summer, August, September, somewhere thereabouts, the Architecture Review Board denied the certificate of appropriateness for demolition of Twinsburg Old School. At that point, I requested, in front of city council on the record, an opportunity to be on the agenda, that we could speak in more than five-minute increments with only three people at a time speaking, so that we could present our ideas in a solid program and say, "This is what we would like to do. This is how we can go about doing this." We've tried to work with the city on all of this. I was not denied the opportunity to speak in front of council. I was not given the opportunity. I was simply ignored. I received absolutely nothing. I spoke with a few council members in passing that I ran into around the community. I said, "How come I can't get on the agenda? How do I get on the agenda? What do we have to do to present our ideas?" All I heard was, "Oh, I don't know about that. I don't know how to do that." That's all we got. Nothing ever came of that. We were pretty much ignored, like I said. All along, we've heard from the city, "There's no plans for demolition." I heard just quite recently again, "There's no plans for demolition." Well, then, why do we have this demolition permit? Why have we heard nothing but, "The old school must come down," as was titled in a letter to the editor from, in the bulletin? The city passed an ordinance, I would say October, November, to remove items from Twinsburg Old School that were already removed, self-admittedly, from the presenter of that. "We already removed these items, but we're passing this ordinance now." That's pretty much the equivalent of me blowing through a stop sign, and a cop pulls me over and says, "You didn't stop back there." And I say, "Well, I stopped now, so we're good, right?" No, that's not how things work, but that's okay. Incidentally, that ordinance that was passed did have the wrong address. I'm sure it was a typo or something, but I hope it was corrected, because all that ordinance did was give permission to remove items from a private residence in Hudson, Ohio. At the appeal meeting for the ARB, where the city was appealing to the ARB to overrule -- am I at my one minute? No. I'm close. I didn't -- did I hear one minute?
Yeah.
Okay. At the appeal, a counselor says, "I spoke with Mr. Turle several times on the issue. This did not happen." We spoke very briefly for one time about an apology to one of the committee members, and we started talking about the old school, and I says, "You know what? I'm going to change the subject, because you are entitled to be a private citizen out here. We will discuss this in City Hall." The appeal hearing pretty much proved that the proper course of action was not taken. There was no application. There were no plans to show the remediation, but there was the demolition permit or certificate of appropriateness approved. And this whole thing, it just goes to show that there's been no proper course of action in this. One of the council members said that this whole thing has been dealt with wrong right from the beginning, and it could have been dealt with so much better. There is still opportunity to do the right thing here. We would like, I'm speaking as a private citizen, not as a committee member, but there is still an opportunity to research this thing and do this right. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, is there anyone else in?
There is not.
Okay. Any comments? Okay. All right, next, we're going to move on to council communications and committee reports. Mr. Yates?
Yes, the Parks and Rec, none of my committees have met since our last meeting. However, the Parks and Rec Committee is set to meet on February 19th at 7:00 p.m. I would encourage residents to come out to that. It's typically not, in the past, when I was involved, well-attended by the public. But however, it is an open meeting, so I would encourage any residents to come to those meetings. They're only held, you know, maybe four or five a year. Planning Commission meeting, there was not one on the, I believe, the 4th. The next meeting is set for February 24th at 7:00 p.m. Just keep watch of the website, because I'm not sure if there's anything that's been submitted yet, so that could get canceled if there's nothing on the, on the agenda. That's all I have this evening.
Mr. Roden?
Thank you. The Twins Day meeting was canceled last week due to weather and is rescheduled for, excuse me, for tomorrow evening. And then Parks, our Environmental Commission is meeting on Thursday, and they have actually, it's going to be the first meeting of the year, but they've been really busy working on some grants and working again on the new, that program, which was the Sprouting Gardeners. It's going to come back this year, and they've been working with Lowe's and Home Depot in terms of helping with them and getting that done. And we'll also be working with the Eagle Scouts, so it should be a good meeting on Thursday, and they've been doing a great job. Thank you, Daisy. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you. Good evening. The Border Zoning Appeals will meet tomorrow evening here at City Hall at 6:30. One announcement we have of an upcoming event would be on the 20th, Thursday, the 20th. The mayor will be giving her State of the City address at the Hilton Garden Inn. That'll be at 11:30. That's sponsored by the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce, so if anybody is interested, you can go on their website. I'm not sure if there's still any tickets available or seats.
There are.
Are there? Okay. So there are seats and tickets available. You can go on the website and sign up, and you could pay through there and attend the State of the City address. It's always very informative, well-attended, and a good way to spend, find out what's going on here in the city from the past and what's coming in the future. I had the opportunity, within the last couple of weeks, the Twinsburg Community Theater presented Through the Looking Glass, the play. And I got to tell you, I went to that play, and it was a great way to spend a Sunday afternoon. Everybody said, "Wow, it's two and a half hours. It's kind of long." But it didn't seem that long at all, and I just want to give a shout-out to everybody involved in that play, all the actors, from young and old alike. It was a great play, and everybody involved, the directors, and I don't, really not sure who all the people are to shout-out to, but they all, everybody did a great job. It was a great production, and I'm glad I got to see it. Finally, I have one thing under the minutes. I did want to make one correction that I forgot. The special council meeting at January 21st, that was with regards to overturning the decision of the Architecture Review Board. The question was to overturn the December 12th decision of the board, and the roll-call is not correct. I'd like to correct that roll-call. The motion passed six to one with Mr. Cerace abstaining. Actually, a no vote was to vote to not overturn the ruling, so it was a six to one with Mr. Cerace voting yes. So I just want to make that correction in there. Right? It was a yes vote. Okay. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, is that a motion?
I think, well, if you have a motion, because I think you already had a motion to approve the minutes.
We did.
So you have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
We did not have a motion to approve the minutes.
No, we just, no, we just said they stand as written, so we didn't make a motion.
If you have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay. You make them up.
I'll make that as a motion. I'll say, "To approve the minutes as amended."
Okay. Mr. Scafidi made the motion. Mr. Cerace seconded. Please call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Cerace?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
That's the end of my report. Thanks.
My committees have not met. Mr. Fury?
My committees have not met either, but tonight, we're going to put the fifth member of the redistricting committee on later in legislation, so we'll be forming that committee, which every five years rebalances the electorate in the five boards of the city of Twinsburg. Within the next month, we'll have a, some of the results from Brian Huntley, the golf course architect that's been hired by the city to give us some pointers on things that we can do internally to improve the golf course, lower our maintenance costs, and also increase player and revenue. So that, that should be coming later this month, and the finance committee, I believe, is going to meet next meeting before council. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Cerace?
Yes, thank you. The finance committee was supposed to meet this evening, but we had to change the schedule. As Mr. Fury said, we'll probably meet before our next council meeting for finance. The Charter Review Commission met last night here in the council chambers, and they have, at least for the present time, decided to meet on Mondays. Next Monday is a holiday, so they will not meet. The next meeting is February 24th, where they'll meet here either in this room or in the jury room at 7:00 p.m. We invite any resident that is interested, that may have input in looking at the charter and possible changes, to please feel free to attend. We have begun last evening reading through the charter, and we'll continue until we read through the entire thing. And as we go through them, they make notes on things they want to come back and address later during this time period. So any, anyone from the community that has any input or something that they would like to see changed or added or whatever can feel free to come to one of these meetings. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
Thank you. The Architectural Review Board met February 6th. It had one item on the agenda, and it was a non-illuminated planner sign at 8027 Darrell Road, and it was approved as noted. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mrs. Stoffer. Good evening, everybody. I just want to follow up on Mr. Scafidi's comments about Through the Looking Glass, the production that the youth theater just presented. And all I have to say is, wow. It was really amazing. It is not what you think of as a local community theater production. It was so professional. It was just unbelievable. The kids were amazing, the voices, the acting. And I would really like to congratulate the directors, Shawna Tally, Jim Volkert, and Chelsea Savagio. They did a tremendous job, and I have to say, because she's a local gal, Hallie St. John, who was the lead, played Alice, just amazing, and her voice is just incredible. So congratulations to everybody. It was a delightful, delightful evening. And my granddaughter and her friends, and I really enjoyed it. Few items this evening. First of all, you will notice, coming up here in a few short weeks, the planting of approximately 300 trees in the city of Twinsburg. Amy Moore secured a relief grant for us, which provided about $20,000 towards the planting of these trees. And some of them will be planted in the spring, some in the fall, but nevertheless, we'll be getting that started. Actually, I think the golf course is done already, isn't it, Amy?
I don't know.
Okay, so we'll finish it up this spring, then. So that will be going on, and again, it's just a great environmental project for the city, and I'm just really, really pleased about that. I'd like to thank Senator Frank LaRose. He co-sponsored Senate Joint Resolution 6, which is the renewal of the State Capitol Improvement Program. And this is a very, very important program. It helps communities provide for public infrastructure, so I really appreciate his support, and I know that when it goes to the voters, again, this will be a renewal, that we'll have more information for you. And the senator will, of course, get some information out on this program. So thank you to him. We had a couple really nice letters from residents that were happy to see the many plow trucks in force in the morning, and this one says that they felt that the Twinsburg roads were in excellent shape. Their employees travel from all areas of northeast Ohio, and over half of the employees said that it took double or triple the time for them to get to work. This person lives in Solon and said it did not take her any longer to navigate Pettibone Liberty Cannon Route 82, and she wanted to thank the Twinsburg crew. She said, "A great job." That was from Carolyn Lookabil. And from another person who lives in the city of Twinsburg, also wanted to congratulate the city workers and their crews on the great jobs they did on the road. This person lives in Twinsburg and works in Solon, just the opposite, and said that the Twinsburg roads were in great shape. So thank you both of those people for writing to us. We really appreciate it. I know the crews enjoy hearing nice comments like that about their work. Just recently, Metro Park Serving Summit County released one of their flyers that they put out on a monthly basis, and, I'm sorry, on a quarterly basis. This one is Winter 14, and on the back is the proposed Liberty Park Nature Center. There's a rendering of it. As you know, this was passed by Planning Commission, and hopefully, we will get this thing going sometime shortly. So thank you again to Metro Park Serving Summit County. It's a nice rendering, and there's some information about the project in their quarterly book here. A few events coming up. This Thursday, February 13th, that's at 3:30 to 6:30 at the Fitness Center, there's going to be a free health fair. This is for employees, for their spouses, for children, for residents, for anybody who's at the Fitness Center. 3:30 to 6:30, stop in. There will be lots of vendors and exhibits, and there's be some good demonstrations. So if you have a few minutes, you might want to find out how to improve your health at the beginning of 2014. And again, that is part of the Fit in Twinsburg program at the Fitness Center Thursday afternoon at 3:30. Also, would like to mention there's an evening at the races. This is Friday, February 21st. It'll be at the Twin Haven Reception Center. Doors open at 6:30. Donations are $30 a person. This is being sponsored by the Twinsburg Fire Department. John Dunn is the person to reach in our fire department for tickets, or Shannon Collins will be able to direct you on how to get tickets. The proceeds will benefit the VFW Post 4929 and their efforts to bring the Cost of Freedom Tribute to Twinsburg in 2015, and the Scholarship Fund of the Twinsburg Firefighters. So again, evening at the races, Friday, February 21st. Hope you can make that event. As you know, this evening, our finance director, Karen House, is not here. She wasn't able to make it tonight, but she did provide some information for you, the revised Finance Committee Capital Improvement Budget. So that information is for your review. There will be, as you mentioned before, a Finance Committee meeting before the next council meeting on February 25th. Also, there is a paper that she left for you, a discussion of the proposed permanent appropriations. There's been some increases. One of the big increases, of course, is our health care in the city, so she talks a little bit about that in there. Our city income tax, the first distribution for February, we are down by 9%, but again, that's just our first distribution. We'll see how we end up at the end of the month. She'll have a full report of that at the next council meeting. And the state auditors are back at City Hall, and the audit for 2014, well, the 2013 audit being done in 2014 has now begun. So if you want to get prepared for the Finance Committee meeting, that will be next, before the next council meeting, that information has been provided by Karen House. So thank you for that, and we have some department head reports tonight, starting with Chief Noga.
Good evening. During the month of January, the city of Twinsburg Communications Center generated 2,267 calls for service among the Twinsburg Police and Fire Departments and the Reminder of Police and Fire Departments. Twinsburg police officers arrested and are cited 133 suspects into court on 180 different counts, including 24 driving under suspension counts and/or driving without a valid license, and 11 operating a vehicle under the influence of alcohol. Twinsburg officers issued 237 written warnings and 12 parking citations, and we also investigated 46 traffic crashes, of which 12 were injury crashes, 6 were on private property, and none were fatal. I'd also like to extend my condolences to the family of Lester D. Mitchell, who is a Twinsburg resident and the retired chief of police at Cleveland State University. I worked for Chief Mitchell for two years, from 1995 to 1997, before I came to Twinsburg. He was tragically struck and killed on 480 on February 2nd and was laid to rest today. Chief Mitchell was a big advocate of education, of formal education for police officers, and he was one of the inspirations for me to continue on and obtain a master's degree, so my heart goes out, and of course, all of our hearts go out to him and his family. And that's my report.
Thank you, chief. Chris Campbell, Public Works.
Good evening, council. Through the end of January, the Service Department has responded to 24 snow and ice events. The crews have applied 7,600 tons of salt to the roadways, 26,820 gallons of brine, and have driven over, or just under 30,000 miles. We received a shipment of salt today, 1,500 tons that will fill our salt bin. We've been extremely fortunate this year to get our salt when we need it, as much as we need it. This, this last, this will be our last delivery under the, our agreed amount with Cargill. We use in a normal year the equivalent of three bins of salt, so we're full at this point. If we get a, you know, if we get any break in the weather, we should be fine. But anticipating maybe a little bit tougher winter, we've contacted Cargill, and they, at this point, they said they could supply us with more salt, and they would probably hold the price to this year's contract price. So I think we're in pretty good shape. I know anybody that was getting salt through Morton wasn't quite as fortunate as we were. So we never ran out of salt, and we ran low, of course, but we're in real good shape at this point. So the crews are doing a great job, and, you know, they're always cognizant of the fact that, you know, when the salt is getting low, they will adjust when they need to. But we really didn't have to make any wholesale changes to the program, so we're doing real well there. Between snow and ice events, we're out repairing mailboxes that get hit during the course of that operation, and we just encourage residents, if mailbox has been damaged, just give us a call, and they try to respond very quickly. Along with that, you have your potholes. We have, we have patched 1,360 potholes. It's probably double where we were at this time last year, but this extreme cold has just beat these roadways up. So between these snow and ice events, we'll be out there doing potholes. You know, many of them, you're doing two, three, four times, however many, you know, that cold patch just doesn't hold. We're looking at, one of the other cities has a machine that they've been working with, city of Kent, and I think Ravenna, that actually takes and recycles the asphalt that's been ground in the summertime. And they've been tweaking that machine, and if we can get some hot patch out of that, we will, we will, we will get that. The, unfortunately, the microturban is down. We have to make some repairs to that, and so that will be up, back and running as quickly as we can. And the other thing that Service Department is taking on, a few small building maintenance projects during any time that it's not snowing, so getting some other work done, along with our normal snow and ice programs, so. And that's my report.
Thank you.
And Larry Finch, Community Planning.
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor, Council. This is a fairly busy time for us in the, in the Community Development Department, even though things are slowing down for Planning Commission and construction's a little slow. We're in our Twinsburg Occupancy Program and Community Reinvestment Area Program annual reporting cycle. We've sent out monitoring letters and forms to companies that are receiving benefits through both the CRA and TOP program. The returns are requested by March 7th. We're anticipating a Tax and Center of View Council meeting to be conducted on March 17th, or the week of March 17th. We have yet to set the date, specific date for that. And our reports will be due to the state by the end of March. We're also working on completing our Clean Ohio Revitalization Fund Grant Program and Job Ready Sites Program annual reports to the state, both of which have to be completed by March 1st. We've received our first Clean Ohio Revitalization Fund Grant reimbursement request, and we're in the process of reviewing all 524 pages of it. And it's going to require that we probably come back to council to modify our budget in the department, because we're going to need to pass through the grant funds. We didn't anticipate that in the original budget, so we'll just, it's just a matter of identifying the funds. We're going to get from the state and pass on to the contractors who are doing the work. We will be meeting on Thursday this week to sit down with our certified professional to review all the submittals that are included within that, within that document. Lynn Mutter is working with Shannon in an effort to make sure that we get all the zoning and development regulation changes into, and corrections into Walter Dray for inclusion in a codification of the zoning and development regulations. I'm really happy to see the development regulations being codified. It's been a long time since it's happened, and, you know, hopefully, we'll get it back in a regular codification series, process. The comprehensive plan draft has been presented to the Planning Commission on January 27th for review, and will be discussed at their meeting on February 25th, or 24th, I think. We're welcoming all comments, and the meeting will be open to the public, of course, all of the Planning Commission meetings are, and we're encouraging people to attend that meeting. Finalizing the survey from Crane's Cleveland Business Magazine's Reading the Suburb, you know, we're hoping that we're going to continue our, what, seven-year streak of being in the top 10 in northeast Ohio. So we're hopeful that when we get that submitted, it'll meet with their approval. And finally, the Phase Two survey efforts, the soil testing, will be underway at the Old School property this week. And the fuel oil storage tank is scheduled to be removed on this Thursday afternoon. So that should be some activity at the Old School, remove that old fuel oil storage tank. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Pardon me? No. Okay, next, moving on to legislation. First, we have Ordinance 12, 2014. Shannon?
An ordinance amending Chapter 149.01 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Twinsburg regarding fees and deposits.
Okay, and this is its second reading? And we have, next we have Resolution 13, 2014. Shannon?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Summit Soil and Water Conservation District.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 13, 2014. Is there a second?
A second. You.
Okay, Stoffer made the motion and seconded by Mr. Roden. Any discussion? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
A resolution 13, 2014 passes 7-0. Okay, next, we have Ordinance 14, 2014. Shannon?
An ordinance amending Section 147.02 Sick Leave of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Twinsburg and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on Ordinance 14, 2014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion and was seconded by Mr. Scafidi. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, this is, let me say something? This is a verbiage change to the sick leave portion of the ordinance. And in order to get it correct and make all the correct payouts, it needs to be on emergency tonight.
Anyone else? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes 7-0. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 14, 2014 as an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion and was seconded by Mr. Ceraci. Any, now do any more discussion or no?
This simply makes a change from saying previous calendar year to current calendar year. It's the only change in this wording.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 14, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote as an emergency. Next, we have Resolution 15, 2014. Shannon?
A resolution appointing one member to the Capital Improvements Board and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt as an emergency Resolution 06, oh, I'm sorry, what, 15, 2014? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion. Mr. Scafidi seconded it. We're voting to appoint Dennis Kaplan as the Ward One Representative to the Capital Improvements Board for the term running 21114 through 13116. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 15, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. I'd like to thank Mr. Kaplan for his service. Next, we will have Resolution 16, 2014. Shannon?
A resolution appointing a qualified voter to the 2014 Districting Commission and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt as an emergency Resolution 16, 2014. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Okay, and this one, we're voting to appoint Debbie Pelz as the Ward One Representative to the Districting Commission. Any further discussion? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
A resolution 16, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have Ordinance 17, 2014. Shannon?
An ordinance establishing and adopting new fund numbers for the Finance Department and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on Ordinance 17, 2014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion. Mr. Ceraci seconded. Any discussion? Okay, well, the city's implemented a new financial accounting system, and in order to enhance and establish accounting uniformity, must assign new fund numbers to existing accounts. So doing this on emergency will allow the finance to retroback to 2014 and be reflected in the 2014 financial documents. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes 7-0. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 17, 2014 as an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion and was seconded by Mr. Yates. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 17, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote as an emergency. And finally, we have Resolution 18, 2014. Shannon?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement pursuant to Section 5521.01 of the Ohio Revised Code with Ohio Department of Transportation to allow work on state highways within the City of Twinsburg Corporation Limits.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 18, 2014. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mrs. Stoffer and seconded by Mr. Ceraci. Any discussion? All right, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 18, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Okay, that's the end of our legislation. So now we're moving on to unfinished business, new business and miscellaneous. Mr. McDermott?
I am done this evening.
Okay, Mr. Ceraci?
None, thank you.
Mr. Fury?
None, thank you.
Okay. You know, I have something I would like to say. I'd like to congratulate the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters. And Mr. Ceraci, I went to the first TAB tournament. I don't know if that was before or after our last council meeting, but it was really such a well-run tournament. I'd never been, well, I hadn't been in a long time to anything like that, but it was quite a sight. Were there 36 teams there, Mr. Ceraci?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven teams, and it was just amazing watching the people all work together the way they did. I just thought it was just such a great reflection of our community and our schools and how people work together. And that's all I have. Mr. Scafidi?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Mr. Roden?
I have nothing this evening as well. Thank you.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah, I just also want to just say what an unbelievable that event is for our middle school. You know, Vance is here. I know Kathy was here. Gary does a lot, contributes a ton of time to it. But to have 37 teams show up for a wrestling tournament, it's hard to even imagine the coordination that has to go. There was, I believe, 1,000 matches wrestled in a 24-hour period between Friday night and Saturday, literally 1,000. So it's just, it's really an impressive event. And I know the schools that come here, because I talked to a lot of different parents from different schools during the event, and, I mean, they really look at this as one of the, probably the most elite tournament in the state for seventh and eighth graders. So just congratulations to TAB, and, you know, it's just another great event. And, you know, it really shows a lot of our school system and our community to be able to host something like that and provide it for the kids. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor?
Mrs. Stoffer, did Matt compete recently?
He did. That was in the grade school youth tournament. He did.
And he ended up?
Fourth place.
In the state, right?
Fourth in the state.
So congratulations to him. I was delighted to read that. I think that was pretty amazing.
Well, thank you very much.
Please extend our congratulations to him.
I'll be sure to tell him.
And that's all I have this evening.
Well, thank you. Mr. Maestros?
Nothing, thank you.
Shannon? Nothing, thank you. Okay, all right, with no further business, I guess I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Shannon, please call or make the.
A second.
Okay, not to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I made the motion. Mr. Fury seconded.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned.